We'll call this meeting to order. That is the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Vince Maggio.
Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. Lord, we pray that you be with us in this council chambers today as we conduct our business. Lord, be with each and every one of us as we drive home. Make sure that we are safe. Protect us. Protect our families. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's take the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Counsel, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 17, 2022 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience on this approving the minutes? Counsel, do you have any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Does anyone else have any questions on today's agenda? Counsel? Please cast your vote. Have any ceremonial matters for us?
Motion carries. Or no, it says a quorum's not met. Let's try that again. Did it pop up?
Yeah.
Motion carries. There's no ceremonial matters or recognition of guests today?
Bids.
No bids today?
Unfinished business.
Adopted ordinance, amending ordinance 31 of 2021, increasing the appropriated amount by $400,000 using the American Rescue Plan Act grant to extend the nano filtration pilot study. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Do we have any questions from the audience?
Good afternoon, council meetings. Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Kerry Chandler and my address is 2924 Heather Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana. This ordinance, I think it's an inappropriate amount of money to spend on the water filtration system that we already have. We're supposed to have one of the best water filtration systems it is. And I think this money could be spent somewhere else. I don't have the idea. I don't know what the purpose of it is for, unless it's just free money from the American Rescue Plan. But I think $400,000 to continue a study that we've already paid. How much, Mr. Williams, have we already paid for this study?
For the plant you're talking about?
Yeah.
Roughly, what, $30 million being so?
Okay.
Not even that much.
All right. Okay, all right. I just object to it.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Counsel, do you have any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing addition of one auto mechanic, one physician in the Fleet Services Department and amending the general fund budget. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to transfer $10,000 from the Police Department to the Public Affairs Department in the 2022 general fund budget to hire a part-time temporary media relations manager. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing Carol Anderson to execute the attached alcoholic beverage contract between the Bossier City Civic Center and Thrifty Liquor. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, is this contract for one year? One year?
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business.
Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner John Good Jr., PTS Holdings LLC. Location, a certain tract of land being 36.424 acres, more or less located in Section 24, Township 18 North, Range 13 West, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request a zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from RMD residential medium density and B1 business office to RMD residential medium density for proposed residential development.
So moved.
Second.
John, I've seen you a long time. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Please state your name and address, please.
John Good Jr., 323 Bridge Point Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana.
And just trying to build another subdivision.
Yeah, trying to figure out.
Can anything special you need to tell us about?
No, just doing something with the land that's been over there for a while. I thought I was gonna sell it and I said, you know what, might as well finish it myself. So it's gonna be nice. It's gonna be pretty much for beginners and then maybe retirees looking to scale down. So got 123 lots and looking forward to getting started.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, do you have any questions? Cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas Chandler to execute the attached revised evacuation host agreement with the City of Bossier City and the Northwest Louisiana Veterans Home. Final reading? Our first reading, I'm sorry.
What?
I said, I'm sorry, it was first reading.
So moved.
Second.
I'm trying not to wear glasses. I'm trying.
Mayor, has you got anything you want to say about this? And I was pretty straightforward.
Yes, sir. I mean, if y'all give me an opportunity to sign it, it'd be, you know, something in case something bad happens, we can use the Civic Center to house some people in an emergency. I know we had to do it once before when the weather happened to bounce south. Feel bad.
Yeah.
Very convenient.
Okay. Any questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to appropriate $586,512 from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to purchase police vehicles. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
How many vehicles was this for?
I don't see the chief here. BJ, do you know anything about that?
I don't know exactly how many vehicles it is I can find out, but 24.
24?
Yeah.
We have to, the opportunities we have to get the vehicles, we're gonna have to do it now because we're having trouble getting them.
No, no, I knew about all that. I was just wondering how many vehicles that it was for this amount.
Do we have a, do we have a commitment from the manufacturer of the price? There's not gonna be a price fluctuation?
No.
Given shortage?
There shouldn't be a price fluctuation. It's on bid, so there shouldn't be any problem.
Thank you, BJ. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to appropriate additional funds for improvements to the Bossier Arts Council Building for a total of $200,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Fund. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Has all the other work already been done over there? I know before the previous council, y'all appropriated money. Has all that been done?
No, if you recall, we opened bids to get the envelope work started. Those came in over our original budget. So in anticipation of there being more gremlins in there, once we start peeling back some of the problems, we're recommending $200,000 to bring all of the work that we originally allocated in that project through to completion, plus a little money to help take care of anything else we may see once we're out there working.
That arts council building, that's not a historical building or anything like that, is it?
It is.
Is it?
Yep, it's probably one of the few that we have.
Okay, I thought that it was down there. I was just making sure.
Yes, sir. David was in jail a long time ago.
He remembers when it was built.
Yeah, I do too.
I remember the remodeling and all.
Any other questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached memorandum of understanding between the State of Louisiana, Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation and Tourism, the Bossier Parish Police Jury, Caddo Parish Commission, City of Shreveport and the City of Bossier City. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, I've asked Chris to say a few words about this.
Yeah, I think, so the Jimmy Davis Bridge has been probably one of the most anticipated projects for a while. It's definitely everybody in Bossier and Shreveport who commute across it every day. It's a big need for them. I think that at the end of the day, we recognize that a four-lane bridge is the ultimate goal. It is what we want. The Linear Park kind of caught us all off guard, but we have worked diligently with the parish, the City of Shreveport, Caddo, and DOTD and the Lieutenant Governor's Office to possibly resolve that. And so by passing this, essentially, I think that we are doing, exhausting every effort on our part to ensure that a four-lane bridge is a reality. And now we put it in the hands of the Lieutenant Governor to see if we can see this through to where we can have a four-lane bridge in a linear park.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the audience about this?
As President, I wanted to ask a couple of things. I know this is an MOU, but I wanted to know, has it been discussed with the underwriter of the city regarding future liability insurance? Has that been addressed? I don't know who could answer that.
Which my, if I may, my understanding, and Richard may be able to validate this, that we're not gonna go forward with accepting any type of liability on the part.
Okay.
That was the whole purpose, I think, to what Mr. Smith was talking about, is Lieutenant Governor's Office would take that, which would mean none of us will assume any liability. As I appreciate it, this is just an MOU that we will assist with the cleanup of trash and debris and so forth, and that's it. So that's the extent of the liability as far as the city goes, as I appreciate it. Mr. Darby?
Okay. So in the context of this MOU, it also states initial inspection of the bridge. So after the initial inspection, will the city or the partners involved become liable for that inspection again? Not ever?
No. They've already said, we was at a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor and he said that they would put funds aside to do that. And actually, we was on a conference call a couple of weeks ago, the head of DOTD, Sean Wilson, and he said there would be money put aside also for any future inspections.
Okay. All right. So what's the projection of the staff cost? Has that been addressed or is it going to be addressed by the administration?
Well, we put your name down to come down there and do, we're gonna rotate, Jeff.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna hire any staff at all. It's just, I think somebody's talked to the Clean City Committee. Or, maybe not. I thought we did though.
So it's not gonna be under the Parks and Recreation Department?
Jeff, I don't know. I wish I could answer that question. I don't think so.
I mean, one thought would be that we could amend the contract with Live Oaks to include, you know, picking up trash twice a week there. So.
And there's three other government bodies that will be mentioned in as well.
I was just thinking about the city staffing regarding this. So how many years is that MOU? What's the time?
Perpetuity.
Okay. So the entity can never come back to rescind or revise that MOU?
I guess, or you mean from us revising?
Not us, them.
No, I mean, it's an agreement.
Okay, all right.
Of course, you know how that is dealing with the state, right?
Yeah, that's my concern, yeah.
I share that same concern.
Okay, all right. And the last thing I wanted to ask, is there going to be an oversight committee? I know there's other entities involved, so.
That I don't.
Well, Shreveport, of course, with Caddo will take care of their side. We'll take care of our side. So we'll just be dealing with the jury. I don't know if there'll be an oversight committee. I don't, I personally don't see any. There may be a reason it could pop up in the future if this ever happens.
Okay.
I don't see one now, though.
Okay. Well, those are things I wanted to ask and hopefully everything is on the up and up with this. I just thought about those different items that could be an issue, future speaking. But, okay, thank you so much.
Does the audience have any questions? I've already asked that. I'm sorry. Counsel, any more questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, I mean adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a secretary due to resignation in the Bossier City Legal Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one traffic control technician for the Traffic Engineering Division. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to fill a vacant laborer one position in the Solid Waste Division and a laborer one position in street sweeping and grass cutting in the Public Works Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to authorize Mayor Chandler to submit a loan application on behalf of the City of Bossier City to the Department of Health under the Emerging Contaminants Supplemental Fund. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Russianbuck, thank you for explaining this earlier. I was maybe hoping you could explain it for the general public, kind of what's going on here.
So just briefly, and we touched on this a little bit when we were talking about the pilot study and some of the challenges we've encountered in there being manganese. Part of these emerging contaminants, that supplemental fund that the state has available is through this program. So it's through the Drinking Water Evolving Loan Fund. It's for emerging contaminants, one of those being manganese. So we put together an application to pursue some grant funds for that, which would be in the form of a debt forgiveness, you know, through the Drinking Water Evolving Loan Fund. So this is our first formalized effort to pursue those dollars that are available through the state.
Free money.
Free money. Yes, sir.
And also, the resolution following this one is the same?
It's very similar, yes.
We're just replacing Mayor Walker with Mayor Chandler.
Yes, sir. So, sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you, but when we were working on this particular effort and talking with the Drinking Water Evolving Loan Fund folks, they said we needed to get our previous resolution amended to include the new mayor and the new finance director, which is what this does. And some history there. Y'all hear about the, you know, the trillion dollars worth of money that's available through the federal government being administered through the state, various agencies being the Division of Administration and the Drinking Water Evolving Loan Fund Program. So this is an application on behalf of the City of Bossier to work within those programs in an attempt to get some of that infrastructure money. I'll be leaving here to Baton Rouge today to visit with some of the folks down there regarding the water sector program, grants that are also available, work with them on behalf of the City of Bossier to try to get some of those money. So this is to pursue grant dollars for the City of Bossier that are available specifically for water and sewer projects.
And to date, Bossier hasn't received any money yet.
Correct.
We've just filled out an application.
Bossier has not received any money and no entity in Bossier Parish has received any money. We're very close in looking at the first round funding on the water sector program. One of our water projects was five points from being funded. So that's the reason we're going down to get a little better educated on how we can come up with five more points. What's that gonna take? Bossier's invested a lot of its own resources into the infrastructure through this council administration. And we're wanting to work to use that as a positive to get some of these grant funds, you know, for the city.
One final question. I forgot to ask you this earlier. When, assuming that we get approved for the money and we get it, is it gonna be in writing that it's, the debt will be forgiven, that it's a grant?
Absolutely, yeah. So even before we would go to the bond commission, we would have to work through whatever that financing structure would be, partially debt forgiveness, partially the City of Bossier, whatever that looks like. And we're nowhere close to that.
Right.
We gotta begin the process, but yes, that's all part of that structure, that funding structure. So it would be something we would need assurances from, but not just Bossier. The bond commission's gonna want that as well, you know, and the Drinking Water Evolving Loan Fund through LDH. They want all of that to be pretty black and white before they agree to anything.
Right. So this is just basically getting us kind of see where we fall in and what we can get.
This is the very beginning of a very long process. We like dealing with those folks. The city's got a great relationship with Louisiana Department of Health and the Drinking Water Evolving Loan Fund Program. We've got a project right now that we're closing out with them. They offer, in our opinion, some of the best public lending, you know, vehicles, you know, that are low interest and safe, you know, for any community, so.
Any more questions? Mayor, thank you for your effort for helping us do something.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. All right, counsel?
Audience?
Audience, I'm sorry. Do you have any comments? Mr. Chandler?
Good afternoon, thank you. Kerry Chandler, 2924 Heather Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana. I have two questions about this. How much money are we asking for?
How much?
Do we have any idea of what the loan is for? How much we're gonna ask for the loan?
We don't need the loan yet, so we don't know how much money.
I can answer.
Okay, and then I have one more question.
So the emerging contaminants we're gonna ask, it's like $12 million for the entire state?
We don't need it right now.
We, no, but when we put that application together, we're gonna pursue at a minimum the output expense that we have on the pilot study. So at a bare minimum, that's what we're gonna be looking at, which is around $800,000. So we're gonna pursue that. We know we may pursue some other reimbursement, but on that particular application, that's what we're looking to recoup. On the other one, our initial request was for 30 million, okay? And that's to do a brand-new, you know, membrane reverse osmosis type nano filter plant. So that's what's out there on the application. You know, if they're giving a trillion, why don't we ask for a billion? You know, we have, at least at the time of putting that together, we had information to support that request. But not being complete with the pilot study, that may change. And if it does, we'll come back before the council and talk about that. We're, like I said, we're a long way from that, but we have to be in the mode of asking for that money because a closed mouth doesn't get fed.
Yeah, we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My last question is, if we get this money, which is a big if, is it gonna be dedicated for just the nano filtration and the water and stuff like that? Is that what it's gonna be for?
Because you gotta put a specific project on it, is that right, Ben? So that's what will be dedicated.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
I'll make it real brief, but on the water sector program, the grants that we're looking at pursuing, we're gonna be looking at a variety of projects for the City of Bossier. The maximum limit that they will allow you to, that they will grant is 5 million, but you can ask for as many projects as you want. So we're gonna put together a kind of a portfolio, both water and sewer projects. These are projects that we've been working on with the city a long time and looking to get some positive momentum on those. So we'll have a whole package, both water and sewer, all over the city for that.
Mr. Russianbuck, is there a municipality that already has gotten a grant that you know of?
Yeah, the state issued over, well, right around $300 million already. They've allocated over $300 million to various entities within the state. We applied for those funds, those first round funds, and did not get them. Shreveport got like 15 million. They may have been the only entity in Caddo that got money. So, yeah, they've awarded that and they're looking to do more of that. I think this round's actually, there's over 400 million this round. So we wanna put ourselves in the best position possible to receive some of that.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any more questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to repeal and replace Resolution 49 of 2020. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of city water to serve the Willow Shoot Ranch Residential Subdivision. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
This is just water only. No sewers, not up there. Correct, Ben.
Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved Bossier Press Tribune as the City of Bossier City's official journal for a one-year period effective June 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 43:141.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Phyllis?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, did you?
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Mr. Montgomery?
What is the, I mean, the scuttlebutt on the street as far as us being able to, or the state changing the statute to where we can post this online? Has that ever gotten any traction?
That has not gotten any traction. I know the Louisiana Municipal Association was working on it for this session, but I don't believe it's gotten any traction. I know several states across the US. I know several states across the US don't publish their things in, in newspapers, they publish them online, and of course, it saves a lot of money. I think in advertising, just last year, I spent twenty-five thousand dollars just putting minutes and legal notices for the city council in the newspaper.
I don't know, I mean, would it be worth it, of course, they're out of session now, but to either have a resolution that we can send supporting that effort instead of just, you know, spending twenty-five thousand dollars for really no reason, because everything's online in the modern day and times, is that correct?
We post, we post everything online, as well as, you know, the state requirement right now is in the newspaper, so, you know, any traction that you can get from legislature, legislators to, to get it, so that we don't have to.
On, on the wish of the council, I think it would, it's a way that we can state our position, and for what it's worth, you know, it's, may help get this initiative off the ground and, and moving forward. It sure would save a lot of money across the state with all the various municipalities.
And it's, it's, for, for Bossier, it's difficult, it puts us in a difficult position because the fact that, you know, with the Bossier Press Tribune being our official journal, you have to go with a newspaper that's in your municipal limits, that's, that's the requirement by the state. And so the Bossier Press Tribune is, there was another newspaper that was, I'm not sure if they bid on the, on it or not, but it's a once-a-week publication, and so it really limits when we can publish things and get things done. You know, we're very, very, very strict on, we have to put it in the newspaper, our charter says it has to run seven days in the newspaper, so that, that's why it pushes things out for us so much to get things passed, where other municipalities can get it passed super quick, because they have a newspaper that's, you know, two or three times a week, or even five days a week.
Well, all the more, I mean, we definitely need to do this, and, and put the rationale behind, not only as far as the cost savings, but to your point, it impedes, you know, projects or issues that need to be taken care of in a more expedient manner, so. I, I would like to see us come up with something.
I believe the Bossier Press Tribune has an online edition.
Yes, but it doesn't, that doesn't count, it, it requires.
But I mean, I mean, but if we could get that where it could be published in the online, where it doesn't cost anything for the printing and everything like that, if it still had to go through.
Right.
Go through a, go through a newspaper.
You gonna work on that, Phyllis?
Yes, sir, I'll work with our city attorney on that.
Any more questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
I've got two things, this is for the department heads. When the, when the council passes an ordinance, people cannot start working for you until ten days after publication of that ordinance. So just keep that in the back of your minds, okay?
Contracts or anything.
Huh?
Or signed contracts or anything.
Yeah, signed contracts, can, can have them on the, on the ground working. And the other thing is, we got redistricting coming up, and I wanna make sure, since, I don't know how many newspapers are sold or whatever, but this is a legal notice. A notice hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six PM in the Bossier City Council Chambers, six-twenty Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, for input regarding the redistricting of Bossier City Council Districts for the city. Another public hearing will be held at a special council meeting on Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at two PM in the Bossier City Council Chambers, six-twenty Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, for input regarding the redistricting of Bossier City Council Districts. Redistricting maps for Bossier City Plan two-dash-five district and Bossier City Seven District Plan, as well as a map of current district lines, will be on display for public review in the municipal complex lobby located at six-twenty Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, from eight AM until five PM, Monday through Friday, beginning Wednesday, June eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Written comments will be received at the city clerk's office until twelve PM on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, six-twenty Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. Any questions, counsel? Anything, any comments? Mayor, you looking good down there?
Things good down there.
All right. You don't have comments this week?
Not this week, I just, you know.
Tinsley Park is really blowing up. We, we signed a contract with Perfect Game the other day, and he's got some, some tournaments he's gonna have in twenty-two and twenty-three, and then two D also, we have some tournaments with Tinsley Park, so we're.
Good, yeah.